And welcome to the Monday, December 17th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will make notice that the board met this evening, Commissioner Farahy, Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Clark, myself, Commissioner Abel, Commissioner Larkin, and Commissioner Nagel, to discuss meetings of matters of legal and personnel issues. Consent agenda, is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Is there anything staff would like to pull? Is there anything the community would like to pull? May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through C?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, items A through C, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Public comment? Like to invite the public to come up and speak this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Gail Morrison from 111 Poplar Avenue. This is my daughter, Dambi. We are here about Public Works and Engineering Resolution C, or Item C, the Resolution 2018-146, Maora Design. As you know, we live on Gulf Creek. It's a little bit of a misnomer to call it a creek because it's a stormwater swale that somebody dug to pour all the stormwater into. This study is badly needed. We liked what we heard on December 1st from Maora. There is, I think, a great kind of excitement and willingness for people to look at this, to look at some of the easements that are necessary. I told Jack Larkin that we would be the first to sign, bring it on. And I think it's important that everybody understand this stormwater issue is a man-made problem right now. My property at 111 has six stormwater outfalls pointing at it, or pointing at the properties adjacent to my property. So, we have engineered the water to create the flooding issue we have. On August 13th, Dambi was in the house with me, the water rose and rose. We have been trapped in our house seven times by the waters coming up 10, 12 feet higher than the creek normally is. And we usually stay there until it recedes, and I thought the best place, safest place to be is in the house. Then it kept coming, and it was over the landing for my back door, so two, three inches away from my first floor. And then I thought, I have no way to get out, and we can't go in this water. There's grills floating by, there's construction debris floating by, garbage cans, a porta potty that you all saw the video on Fox 29, I took it, Dambi's voice is in it. So, I think you realize how bad this problem is and how important it is that you get started. And please don't forget that, we've heard a pledge, we're serious this time, we're going to do this, it's of top priority of the leadership. Let's make 2019 the year that you all follow through. All right, thanks.
Good evening, thank you for being here. Any additional public comment?
Just one comment on that. Bob, one of the issues we talked about at the Subcommittee meeting, Public Safety Subcommittee, Chief Lenigan mentioned a vehicle that would be able to go into areas. Did we move forward on that?
He is in the process, I know one of the officers are working on that. It is one of the federal programs where you get those vehicles, I know they're still working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Leslie Morgan, Ward 1. I just want to talk, I should have come last Monday, but I had a prior commitment. And let me know when I can proceed. Thank you. Thank you for that respect. I talk a lot about this over the years, it's one of my passions, and I was very, very disappointed that we got a tax increase. I don't think one was needed. I know that one wasn't needed because your own staff didn't recommend it. I think it's very easy to do tax increases, especially when you have a majority. And it is partisan because the last four tax increases, millage increases, whether they're from operational or capital standpoint, have been always introduced by the Democrats and always majority voted for the Democrats. So, that's since 2010, I didn't even go back to '09 and '08. And from 2010, we've had almost 40% increase in millage, 35%, 35 to 40% increase in millage. So, that's extreme, and I hear Bill White, I respect Bill White, when he says that, "Well, we're still lower compared to our competitors." But then, I started Googling this, and I wanted everybody on the dais to hear this, but I also wanted the public to hear this. In June 18, 2018, there was an article in the Philadelphia Inquirer, and they did a study, and I'd be glad to send it to all of you, where they found that 40 local, and I didn't know what they meant by local, but they said regional or local townships have not increased their township taxes for eight to 10 years. There's 40 of them. I don't know where those 40 are, but this was an article, and I will send it to you guys so that you can hear this. And there's different ways that they went in and said how they avoided that, or why they avoided that. But I think that going into 2019, lots of studies, again, in the flood plain. Lots of money to trails, lots of money that has been misallocated and has not increased our residential housing values at all, including the Audraison purchase. When you have the developer who doesn't want to do it, when you have their own housing people there that didn't want to put the trails there, you have to ask why we did that purchase, to save 21 homes. And yet, that's what we're paying for. We're paying for that sin of $12 million and a follow-on of $6 million in trails. Forget the library, the library could have been handled if we didn't do those two. And we never would be looking at the last two taxing millage increases, the last three millage increases. But what I like to suggest, because I always come with a solution, if I bitch, I come with a solution. Could we have Carfac, the first study that they do, so that you are educated? You know, you may be being told something that's different, but let's get the facts. Let's look at this article, and let's do a corporate analysis and a residential analysis of total taxes and fees. That means we have to burden the transfer tax, we have to look at the millage, we have to look at the stormwater. I'm sorry, Sean, if this bores you, I don't think it bores your residents, okay? Let's look at the stormwater and the sewer, all, the total fee structure and the earned income, okay? And see how we compete, because our houses, and I'd like to bring some realtors in, because I know a lot of the realtors, the residential realtors first. We have not competed with other areas that are growing faster, and their price, their values are growing faster. I know that you want to know this because it makes you make better decisions. But your number one responsibility is to move our values. I don't, and that obviously, safety and the school is very important, which you don't have control over, but you do have control over a lot of things that I think you've misallocated, because maybe you've not relied on people, because Carfac's been down for the count for the last two years. So, I would really suggest we do some analysis, and then take the corporate thing and see how we compete against other corporate tax structures, and do a fully burdened analysis. It will be what it is. Am I up on my five minutes? Okay, one minute. So, you know, I think going into 19, I would like to see that as a resident. As a resident who just got ripped a million one of value in my area for stormwater, so we don't get that. We have no open space out near 11, okay, where I am. So, I feel like I'm paying all these taxes, and I'm not getting any value for you guys. And so, I'll keep speaking about that, and I know Rich's area gets hammered, and so does Garrett Hill as well. So, I'd like to look at the allocation of dollars. I'd like to look at also, to close, getting the Carfac people involved to do an analysis and present it to the public, and maybe have some referendum questions or a marketing study sent out in 19 to see what your residents want. I think they want their values to increase, and I think they want the downtown to look a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Hi, this is Ted Merriman at 109 Poplar. I second Gail's comments about the thing that she had mentioned about the easement. I too would sign that and would gladly assist with installing riparian buffers, since I live on the opposite side of the creek that she does. And I think it is an excellent idea, and I have been installing many native plants, and I would encourage other residents to do the same if they are able to.
Thank you, Ted. Any additional public comment this evening? All right, let's move on. So, reappointments to various boards and commissions, we are going to hold that until January 7th?
Correct.
Correct, our reorg meeting as well. Do you want to make the announcements of boards and commission vacancies?
Sure. Sure, so for our advisory boards and commissions, we currently have, with regard to Carfac, for your term, we have five vacancies. The Citizens Communication Council, there's one vacancy as of January 1st, 2019. There is one vacancy on the Planning Commission. There are three vacancies on the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee, which are three-year terms. There's one vacancy on the Willow's Park Preserve, on the Code Appeals Board, which is a five-year term. There is one immediate vacancy, and there is one vacancy as of January 1st, 2019. The requirements are that the appointee be a master electrician, a master plumber, or a general contractor. There are two vacancies on the Environmental Advisory Board. One is the unexpired term for 2019, beginning January 24th. The other one is the unexpired term beginning January 1st, 2019. The Radnor Haverford Marple Sewer Authority, the five-year term, there's one vacancy as of January 1st, 2019. And then there is one vacancy on the Zoning Hearing Board, which is an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2020.
Okay, very good. And anyone who's interested in these would just send their resume to Mr. Zinkowski, and he will make sure that it gets to us for consideration. Appointments to various boards and commissions, we are going to hold that as well until January 7th, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Committee reports. Public Works and Engineering, we have Resolution 2018-144 authorizing Radnor Township to apply for a grant through PennDOT's Green Light Go program for traffic signals on Lancaster Avenue from Radnor Chester Road to the I-476 northbound ramps in partnership with Penn Medicine at no cost to Radnor Township. Mr. Nocini?
Thank you, Madam President. So, when Penn Medicine received approval, as you can see on the front page of the memo, there's 14 intersections that they were required to improve as part of the land development agreement. The board also agreed to work with Penn Medicine in obtaining grants for these projects. Work with them in the fact that the grants can only be applied for by a municipality. So, all the work, the grant application, any ancillary work with that grant application would be performed by Penn Medicine and their traffic engineer. And the grant would actually be submitted by us and Penn Medicine as a public-private grant for this work. If this grant is not received, this does not change the fact that Penn Medicine still has to make all these improvements. This was just what was agreed upon to start. So, if they do not get the grant, Penn Medicine is still required to do all this work. So, I'd respectfully request the board approve this resolution.
All right, may I get a motion on the floor to approve the Resolution 2018-144?
So moved.
All right, any Commissioner comment on this resolution?
I have a comment, but I'll let any other commissioners go first so as to not interfere with what they're saying.
I guess I just have a...
No, I always wait to after Rich speaks.
If John's, that's fine for John to do that, but I will reserve opportunity to respond to any direct comments on what I say.
Okay, gentlemen, sorry, Commissioner Abel?
Thank you. Steve, so what's on the resolution, we're really looking at just the area around Penn Med, the development project on Penn Medicine. Does it make sense that we would look farther out? And I mean, we really need, if we're talking about Lancaster and we want to do something and look long-term, we should be looking at from Villanova to the Wayne Business District, and make sure that whole area flows efficiently.
So, Commissioner, when the board meets, convenes on the capital projects, so the township wishes to do the entire Route 30 corridor, from Sugar Town Road, from basically Tridifferent to Lower Marion, which we would apply for grants for. So, this grant is due very quickly, where Penn Medicine is going to work on this. If they are successful, then that just maybe adds some more oomph to our grant application. But the intent is for Radnor Township to have traffic adaptive signals along all of Route 30. The last grant we did not receive, I found out after the grant application, is because we didn't go far enough, because this is considered a critical corridor by PennDOT. So, that, what you just said is the intent moving forward.
So, whatever, so if we go forward with this grant application, whatever data comes out of it, if we win it, will be incorporated into a larger...
Well, I guess there's two things. So, this grant could be a standalone, and they could get it or not get it. The township will also apply for a grant for the east and west of this, all these areas.
Okay, thank you.
So, my question is, there's no timing, it would seem, at least that I could find in the documents. So, when would we apply for the grant, when would we potentially get it, how quickly could work potentially begin?
This is due June 11th, that's why we're before you tonight, that's why Penn Medicine is here tonight. They don't, so this is the first step, they don't have the entire grant application completed. They will, pending board approval of this. So, once they submit, it's up to PennDOT at that point to make a determination as to when. I know on some grants, they've been pushed back, others are more timely, I don't have a timeline for them. But again, what the township process is, we'll be looking for, if it so pleases the board to fund the grant applications, we'll be looking for our own grants.
And none of the, so, we won't know until after June if we get the grant? So, none of this work is going to begin for quite some time?
Yeah, I don't recall specifically in the developers' agreement, but there was a timeline that Penn Medicine had to start, regardless of whether they had a grant. So, that work will take place, whether this grant goes through or not. They're required to do so, and they fully understand that, they have to fund it.
Because it would be nice if some of that work could start sooner rather than later, and we could at least start to address some of the, you know, certainly the, some of the intersections, you know, Lancaster and 320 and whatnot, if we could start to address some of those more congested areas would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
I concede my time to the gentleman to my left.
All right, Commissioner Booker?
I actually raised this issue with Bob and Steve some weeks ago. And my view was that we really did not get a good deal from Penn. You see what this is, we now need to spend our time, township time, to help out, and we hope to get a grant, we have no schedule. And the work that's going to be completed really is only around the Penn area. When we know what the issue is, it's not just Penn area, it is also the entire corridor. And this has been something we've been talking about for years, literally years, we've been talking about this traffic adaptive system for Lancaster Avenue. As a matter of fact, Villanova was the first one who gave $176,000, I think, for this, and that money has been sitting for some years, waiting for this traffic adaptive system. But $176 is not even close to enough money to do from all of Lancaster. And I'm surprised that PennDOT would decline our application. It's a critical corridor, we should have done more, well, they should have approved at least what we applied for, and then we should have amended it to go forward. But Villanova started, put some money towards this. And what I said to Bill, to Bob and to Steve was, let's have Penn front the money for this, let's get this in right away, and when the money comes in from the grant, we'll reimburse Penn. And I know that wasn't the agreement, that's not the agreement. I did push for the agreement with Penn before development was approved. The agreement was different, but I think this is something that's important enough, and it's of minimal enough expense to somebody like Penn, that it's just something that they could do and wait for reimbursement, instead of just doing this at this point. But the bigger issue is, both Villanova and Penn are doing some contribution for some traffic adaptive assistance with our traffic, but the taxpayers are largely left to foot the bill for the majority of the critical corridor in Lancaster Avenue. And all of that is to serve two people that we gave just a super, super deal to come in and change the law for them, to let them build exactly what they wanted. So, I guess I will approve this, but again, the preference would be for Penn to front the money. Let's build the traffic adaptive, let's get this going, and then wait to be reimbursed. And hopefully, they will consider doing that.
Okay.
Steve, didn't Villanova Center also give us money for signals at their location?
Yeah, Commissioner, I believe you're correct, there was the $175,000 from Villanova, which came during the CICD. There was a small amount from Villanova Center. And so, our goal would be through grants, like I said, to work east and west of this portion. The most important part of this is the fact that they're getting the I-476 ramps, which was one of the reasons our grant was not successful at the time. We were just trying to do what we had the match from.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional Commissioner comment? And I apologize, Mr. Nocini, I'm looking at this, it does say January 11th is the deadline for this grant. All right, is there any staff comment? Any public comment to the motion on the floor? We'll call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-144 authorizing Radnor Township to apply for a grant through PennDOT's Green Light Go program for traffic signals on Lancaster Avenue from Radnor Chester Road to I-476 northbound ramps in partnership with Penn Medicine at no cost to Radnor Township, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. All right, Resolution 2018-145 waiver request from 245 dot A to C2, minimum infiltration requirement at 309 Midland Avenue. Mr. Nocini?
Thank you, Madam President. So, the applicant and his engineer is here. So, the property at 309 Midland, they're proposing to add 1,176 square feet of new impervious. That falls below stormwater management, that's just groundwater recharge. So, as the ordinance requires, this property does not infiltrate, they cannot perform that action. So, they are required to come to this board. And I have a recommended action, and I did, there is a typo on my part. So, by the ordinance, they are required to come to this board to seek a waiver. Administratively, not through the ordinance, we require them to try to do something to help mitigate what the stormwater impact is. The fact that this is Midland Avenue makes that even perhaps more important. So, I did speak to their engineer, and we kind of went back and forth a little bit on if there's something they can try to do. But what's before the board tonight is a waiver request. It's required by the ordinance that they come to you for that waiver. My recommendation was, if they can do something or attempt something, I would recommend the waiver. If they don't, although it's not a requirement of the ordinance, I recommended, respectfully recommended that you didn't give the waiver, because this is Midland Avenue, and it's a tough area on a good day. So, I will let the applicant and his engineer go.
Well, Sean, let me get a motion on the floor first for approval. Motion for approving Resolution 2018-145?
So moved.
Can I get a second? For discussion?
Second.
Okay.
All right, Dan Finley, the homeowner at 309 Midland Avenue. Thanks for making the time for us this evening. I think the introduction was pretty thorough, so why don't I just hand it over to my engineer, who will go through what we're planning and the mitigation steps that we propose.
So, I agree, the introduction was good. We did have a discussion, and we can certainly propose some alternatives tonight. I just wanted to review that we did do infiltration testing in two locations, where you see the checkered areas here and here. So, infiltration actually came back as zero, which means nothing's really going to move through. So, proposing something like an alternative rain garden, in my professional opinion, I don't think it's appropriate, only because there's a possibility that it could do well, but there's a strong possibility that it could just turn into a little pool. And based on the investigation that was done, it's a strong possibility that it just turns into a little depression that's filled with water all the time. So, although we can install that, I don't think it would be appropriate here, unless somebody has some information on other properties on Midland that maybe did that, and they seem to be working well. Aside from that, I would recommend that we not do like any kind of shallow rain garden. I mean, what we could do is maybe probably two 50-gallon rain barrels installed on the dwelling in two locations at our choice, probably matching the impervious cover of the pool. And we think that that would help a little bit. So, are there any questions?
Well, I mean, I think that makes sense. I mean, I think obviously, Mr. Finley knows what the issues are in this area. He lives through it every single time there's a storm. So, I think anything that can be done, even if it's two rain barrels, I think that that makes sense in that area. You know, unless there's a strong objection to it, I'd be comfortable with that, knowing what I know about the street, so.
Now, Commissioner, when they first came forth, there was zero attempt. So, my request was just to make an attempt of some sort, understanding the area we're in. It's an administrative request, it's not an ordinance request, but my thought is they need to do something, whatever something may be, which, and that would be acceptable.
Thank you.
What's your name, I'm sorry?
My name's David Lissanti.
David?
Mm-hmm.
So, what's the project here, David? It's a thousand-some square feet of impervious, so walk me through, what are we building? Is it patio, is it a new expansion, what do we have?
It's a new pool and an associated concrete patio deck around the pool, and that's it. It's in the backyard, it's towards the rear of the property, and it would sort of abut an outdoor seating area patio that's existing now. It's kind of hard to see on that.
There's a lot of trees in there, there's going to be a lot of leaves in that pool, don't you think? That's what I was worried about with the pool.
I'm sure he's going to have a really good filter.
You know. So, is a pool considered impervious, or why is that impervious?
It's my understanding that the pool water surface is not considered impervious.
Okay, that's my question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But everything else is.
That is correct.
Yeah.
As far as the rain garden, I understand what you're saying, and I, some of the folks in my neighborhood, where we've made them install these rain gardens, they are full of water, as I left today. Standing water in these things. And they do get overgrown, and they really, they're not attractive, they're okay for the first year, and then after that, they are, they're a mess, and the homeowners really don't even know how to keep them up. And all we're really doing is just detaining the water for a little bit and removing a little bit of suspended solids, and then putting it right back into the stormwater. But over in this area here, we are, we are very often, we heard it tonight, it's not the exact area, this is southbound rather than north, but there's flooding issues. And what happens when we build more impervious surface in major storms, when we overload the systems, it just adds to the flooding, right? And when we say that it doesn't perk, I mean, we know that it's not concrete out there. There's some, the grass does at least absorb some water, right? Or trees, I mean, if it's a green space, it does absorb something, it's not zero. So, I guess I'm confused, at this point, for this drawing as it stands right now... So I guess I'm confused, at this point, for this drawing as it stands right now, it seems like we have no rain barrels or anything that we're trying to catch.
There's nothing proposed at this time, because, well, first of all, rain barrels are not traditionally used to meet this goal.
Right.
So that's not something that we would have proposed, you know.
But you just heard Steve say we wanted something.
Yeah, no.
He's asking for something, so.
Yes, and we're offering that, but the reason why it's not on here is because that's not traditionally what you would use to meet this requirement. Now, what we were going to propose was a rain garden. You know, I heard from the Finleys early on that we're going to probably not have good results when it comes to the infiltration testing. So I was, I was ready to do a shallow rain garden, but, you know, they went out there, they opened up two locations, and they tested as shallow as two feet. And both, you know, every single location, every single depth that they tested out came back at zero. So, you know, I don't think it's appropriate. I, you know, if we had to put it in, it's okay. I just, like you said, it could end up being something that just sits with water in it all the time and really serves no purpose. So, you know, there's not a lot of alternatives other than that. You know, rain barrels, they can store water, and depending on how much the homeowner uses them, they can actually do a pretty good job of, you know, maintaining some water that would have generally flowed into the grass or onto another property. So that's what we can offer, because there's just not that much of an alternative at this point.
Mr. Lassante, if you were to amend the soils two feet deep and create some type of an outlet pipe with that, so we only, at a certain point it released, is that an option that you and your client would be interested in?
We could certainly do, and in my mind, a rain garden, you know, by default, I mean, it's going to have amended soils. I mean, I can't imagine it any other way. You would absolutely have 18 to, even up to three feet of amended soil, but at some point, it's going to stop. So we're always challenged with, you know, well, your infiltration rate is only as good as the lowest one, you know. So, you know, it's at zero throughout, so, you know, if we amended two, three feet, at some point, technically, it's going to get to a point where it doesn't infiltrate anymore, and then it's just going to build up. And the second aspect of that, the overflow, there's, this is such a shallow site, such a shallow slope across the site. I don't see any way that we could have any kind of overflow other than surface. There's really nothing that I see to connect to, and it's very shallow across the entire property, so there's not even really a potential for an overflow pipe.
Well, let me suggest this. Why not take this, table this and take this back and put something on the drawing, Steve, that you're happy with, that you could come back and say that you recommend this, because that's not what you're saying right now. Right?
I fully, Mr. Lassante and I just had this conversation last week. There's also other issues with rain gardens in the wintertime. So when soils get frozen, that acts as a limiting layer too. So there's only a certain amount of effectiveness. My biggest concern, Commissioner, was that understanding what occurs on Midland Avenue to just have no attempt at doing something would not be appropriate. So I mean, I'd be fine if, perhaps not to slow this process down, if the board, if it so pleased the board, they do the rain barrels, and I work with Mr. Lassante for some type of a rain garden, effective as it is for as long as it is. So if there's three feet of amended soils over a certain square foot area, well, that's that much more that is taken into the ground. After that, we know it will overflow. So instead of maybe holding them up to January 28th, if it would so please the board, that would be something that maybe we could do with our resident, because it is our resident, so.
Well, and I know this is our resident, and Mr. Finley, I really, I really want to work with and help and get to a point where we're okay, so the Finleys can have the pool and do what they want to do with their house. I really appreciate what you're doing and that, you know, how he wants to improve his property. The issue is, we have an infiltration requirement, and it's not a requirement that I put in. This is, the township decided that we have to infiltrate stormwater or provide, or get a waiver. And again, we are facing millions and millions of dollars in stormwater, and just down the street from this, at the fire station and other place, even the middle school field, there's flooding areas all through the area. And it's a major issue. Because of that, my policy has always been to deny these waivers, to not vote for the waivers, because everybody comes in and they want a waiver. And when we provide these waivers to everybody, we are making the problem worse. What we shouldn't have done, in my view, was we shouldn't have made the infiltration requirement. We should probably remove it now, if we're going to give a waiver for every one. But that's why I'm asking for Steve to get comfortable with it and have it on the drawing so that we could show what will be done, because I, again, I empathize and I want to help and work with the Finleys, and I want you to have this. But the requirement is that we need to infiltrate. If we can't, then I don't know how I can in good conscience vote for it. That's, and it's not, it's not anything against this project or against these, and again, I'm empathetic with these owners. This is consistent, what I've done for every one of these, whether it's been the university or any of the, any one of the localities, any one of the residents.
All right, so now that I understand, coming in here, we understood and we talked about this, and we're happy to mitigate the issue by putting the rain barrels. And I'm not an engineer, but a rain barrel seems 100% efficient if we use it to water flowers, water along when it's not raining, and.
Your engineer is right, though.
It's something that's there and very.
It's not the usual type, it's not the usual item that you would use, but let me ask you this, Mr. Lassante, maybe we could do this tonight. What type of square footage of rain garden do you think you could install? Because, Commissioner, we can address this when he submits the grading permit, if the board, if it pleases the board to move this, I'll make sure when he does the grading permit application, what exactly was discussed tonight. So what do you think, square footage-wise, you could do in a rain garden? That doesn't, that.
Yeah, I, yeah, square footage-wise, I don't know. I know that the requirement was very small, you know, it was less than 100 cubic feet. We could probably do, you know, a 50-square-foot rain garden with, you know, the surface area of the bottom and maybe two to three feet of amended soil.
Commissioner, I think that's, understanding what the situation is with two rain barrels, I think that would be the something we were talking about.
And remember, Rich, this is not, I think out of all the applicants that have come before us for these waiver requests, I think Mr. Finley knows this flooding problem probably better than anybody. I mean, he's right at ground zero, so you have to remember that. I mean, he knows this isn't something that's foreign to him.
How's the basement?
On August 13th, he was underwater, I'm sure.
How's the basement at 309 Midland? How's your basement with?
We're okay. We're the French drain and pump the water out, so you have to take proactive measures against it, for sure. And we do have one of the largest lots on the block that is covered, as you said, with lots of trees that soak up a lot of water. So if you compare our lot to the other lots that have very heavy coverage of impervious that's been grandfathered, we'd be nowhere approaching where most of our neighbors are.
So, Steve, you're suggesting the two rain barrels and a garden?
Yeah, I don't want to see any trees go down, so 50 square feet is pretty minimal, what Mr. Lassante suggests, and I think that's a real good faith attempt by the resident. Like I say, he is our resident. Want to see him get what he wants to do, I think that would be a fine suggestion.
Okay, so, yeah, because last week we approved one that was addition of 735 additional square feet of impervious with one rain barrel, so two rain barrels and a rain garden, seem like. And if you already know the flooding issues, as Commissioner Clark mentions, I'm sure you're not interested in adding to that problem as well, correct?
Yep. Okay, all right, so I guess we can either approve this with that understanding, or we can formally amend it. I assume the recommendation, John, would be to formally amend it, right?
Can you turn on?
Yeah, okay.
Add the conditions to the resolution.
All right, so I'll move to amend Resolution 2018-145 to include, along with approval of the waiver request, conditioned upon the installation of two 50-gallon rain barrels and a rain garden that is at least 50 square feet. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any additional comment to the motion on the floor?
I just have one question. So let's say we do put the rain barrels in, what's the expected lifespan of, how long do those barrels last? 20 years, 30 years?
The rain barrel?
Yeah, I mean, before it'd have to get replaced. Steve, do you know that?
They're made out of plastic, I think you're looking at, you know, decades of use.
Decades, so would that outlive, then my next question is, would that outlive the lifespan of the pool?
Pools could be refurbished, and rain barrels can be replaced. I mean, a rain barrel, they sell them all around, the hardware, they're plastic, PVC, very long lifespan, longer than mine.
Your lifespan, starting now or from when you were?
Starting now, I don't think, I think the rain barrel will outlive me.
All right.
Any other addition, any other Commissioner comment to the amendment that's on the floor? Amended version. All right, any staff comment?
So on this drawing here, where's the pool and where's the rain garden going to go?
So the pool is right here.
And is the pool, so where's the house?
The house is here, which you can't really see, it's very light. And the rain garden would probably go in this, in this area where the, you see the checkered box, that's where the testing was done. That was the preferred location for the rain garden, so that's probably where it will It's downstream of the project.
Do we have any mechanism in place to ensure that future homeowners who maybe don't understand that the rain barrels are a component of the approval process, keep the rain barrels?
For, if this was 1,500 square feet or greater, there's a stormwater management agreement that requires that, and it's connected with the deed and goes on in perpetuity. There is, there is no mechanism for this, because if this ground did infiltrate, it would just be a pit filled with stone. But there is no mechanism to, for the future.
All right, any other additional comment to the amended version of Resolution 2018-145?
I did happen to notice that the bottom of the resolution, it cites the wrong permit, maybe just a copy from an other one. Maybe that could just be corrected.
We'll correct that when we add the two rain barrels and the rain garden.
Is there any additional staff comment on this? Any public comment? All right, I'll call the vote on the Resolution 2018-145 waiver request for two, from Section 245, 22 dot A, 2C2, minimum infiltration requirement at 309 Midland with, to include two rain barrels and one rain garden, correct?
Correct.
Of, what was it?
50-gallon, two 50-gallon rain barrels, one rain garden, at least 50 square feet.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, on to Resolution 2018-146, authorizing Meliora to provide, Meliora Design to provide topographical survey for Gulf Creek and associated areas in conjunction with the North Wayne Flood Reduction Project in the amount of $80,000. Commissioner Larkin, do you want to speak on this first?
Yeah. So a number of the residents got together with me and Michelle from Meliora, and Steve Norsini, and a couple of other people from the township. Meliora put on a presentation for us, and I'll give you the short, short version of it, because it looks like we're on track to get out early tonight. The bottom line is that Meliora started their review by looking at the numbers that we previously had from the other people who had done work in the first ward and other areas of the township. And they also looked at the existing maps that we have, and they determined that there's in the neighborhood of 300 additional acres draining to the Gulf Creek that we were not previously aware of. And it's relevant because.
I'm sorry, John, could you repeat that? 300 what, that you were not previously aware of?
300 additional acres out of different township that are draining into the Gulf Creek area that we were not aware were draining to the Gulf Creek. It's not topologically draining there, it's that there are pipes that previous people who were looking at this project just weren't aware of, piping the water into essentially North Wayne. So that's obviously bad. The problem that that presents is that the scale of the stormwater problem that we have along Gulf Creek is significantly larger than, numbers-wise, than we were previously aware of. And some of the concepts that we were hoping to work with from CH2M are, I mean, they will still detain water, they're not bad plans, it's just that they're going to be a drop in the bucket. So in a significant rainfall event like we had on August 13th or something that is of similar duration and scale in terms of the inches that we got, we need to detain approximately 800,000 cubic feet of water. The poplar bypass concept, which was going to be a conveyance pipe, bucking grade down poplar, and then detaining the stormwater in Calum Township, is going to detain somewhere between, I think it was 30 and 50,000 square feet, so that's just insufficient. Same deal with expanding the North Wayne Field Basin, there's a lot of resident opposition to that to begin with, but it's also going to be a drop in the bucket. What Meliora proposed was, instead of artificial solutions where you channelize the water and then detain it, they instead suggested that we do a floodplain restoration project all along the Gulf Creek. That's going to ideally provide additional storage capacity for somewhere in the neighborhood of about 250,000, 300,000 cubic feet of stormwater, which is a huge difference. It would literally mean the difference in some areas between water coming into your house and not, the difference between water flooding out and destroying your car and not. And of course, these are for major storm events, so hopefully for the less significant storm events, the ones that you live with on a monthly and a yearly basis, it means the difference between having flooding or not. So it's a project that I'm excited about, and I'm excited to keep working on. The next step in their process, though, is to literally go through on a granular level and evaluate every single home, every single property that is owned by the township or commercial entity, that the Gulf Creek flows through, to determine, number one, what's the availability for floodplain restoration here and what would it require. Gail Morrison referenced, when she was here, the concept that she wants to sign, what she's talking about when she says she wants to sign on the dotted line, is that the township would at least potentially be asking some residents whose properties abut the Gulf Creek to allow us to do that floodplain restoration. These are the people who are the most affected by flooding. We had a large township meeting, a lot of those people came out, a lot of them had enormous support for the project, so I'm cautiously optimistic. The project would, at least ideally, would ameliorate the people who are suffering as a result of their proximity to Gulf Creek, so I think that this has a real possibility of moving forward. But like I say, we need to go through and find out, how much space do we have to work with, because this is not a project that anyone contemplates would affect any of the structures on those properties. The township is not coming in and demolishing your house in order to put in a floodplain. What we're doing is we're looking to take the unused portions of the backs of your backyard that abut the creek that are unbuildable anyway, because of property setback rules, because of your proximity to the creek, and just because it floods so darn much that you can't build a structure that's permanent there. So we're looking to figure out what would the topograph. So we're looking to figure out, what would the topography be like there? How, how many pipes do we have running across the creek sewer conveyances that we would have to work around? What does it look like? This is the necessary next step in this project and because the project looks like it could make a real difference, I'm asking the board to support it.
Okay, Mr. Norsini, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay, any, oh, well, can I go ahead and get a motion to approve Resolution 2018-146, authorizing Meliora to provide topographical survey for Gulf Creek and associated areas in conjunction with the North Wayne Flood Reduction Project in the amount of $80,000?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any commissioner comment to the motion on the floor?
I have comment, but I'll let the other commissioners go first so that I would not interrupt anything that they might want to say. And I would ask for the same courtesy.
Jack, this, this is the, this is the project that you think will be going forward?
That's my hope.
Yeah, okay. Have we looked at, so you mentioned all the area in Tridifferent, is there talks to work with Tridifferent? I mean, would you need some easements on property there or would that be helpful?
So, two different questions there, I'll break them down. First off, there are both formal and informal attempts to work with Tridifferent on this and related projects. John and I both know supervisors in Tridifferent and we're trying to get some time to talk to them. And I know that Steve Norsini and Bob are working on a formal approach so that we can actually have a sit-down and maybe do it on camera with them. Historically, that's been something that a lot of people have tried and, you know, we are upstream of other townships and if they came to me and said, "I want you to detain more of your stormwater in North Wayne so that you don't flood Haverford or something," I'm not gonna be terribly receptive. I understand that Tridifferent is not going to be terribly receptive. So, we're working on that, but I do also think that simultaneously we have to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves as best we can. And then in terms of, do we need easements in Tridifferent? The, the concept for this plan would not be to put easements in any part of the township other than Radnor. It's just Radnor, not Tridifferent.
All right, well, that, that's encouraging that, that the thought is to work with Tridifferent, I think that's, I think that's a good way forward. How many residents in North Wayne do you think this would impact, that you would need easements from?
I don't know that yet. We own some of the land that abuts the creek. There are 20 or 30 homes that I've been able to just sort of eyeball as I've been looking at a map. There may be significantly more than that. Of those 20 or 30, I think 10 or so have already said that they're really interested in this project. The easements are not onerous, we're not coming for your homes or anything frightening like that. What we want to do is make sure that the river stops flooding into your homes.
I appreciate it and it sounds very encouraging. Good work.
So my, I, the only question I have, is so the 80,000, that's gonna come from the stormwater fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. You know, I had the opportunity to go and be part of the presentation or listen to the presentation that Meliora gave to the residents a couple Saturdays ago and it sounds like, it sounds like an excellent project. You know, my hope is that everything will pan out and it's something that we'll be able to move forward with. I think it definitely will not only, you know, hopefully will help with the flooding issue, but it will certainly also enhance the neighborhood. And I think it's definitely a lot more attractive than just sticking a pipe underground, so I'll be voting to support this. Thank you. Any other commissioner comment?
I think it's my turn. So, this is the first I'm hearing about three unknown pipes from TE and 800,000 cubic feet of water from those. What more, what more way of detail do we have on that? Is it, is that legal? Is there any issue with that? Are we accepting that that is what is the case and there's nothing else that can be done? Is that something that we approved in the past and we know it's acceptable? Or what's the status of that? Is that just, what's, anything other than, yep, this is what we have, that we know right now?
Commissioner, this is similar to what Commissioner Larkin had noted, we have pipes that discharge to other townships. So the way this came about, this is nothing nefarious, just like we did our PRP plan, Tridifferent did theirs, they posted it online. We have a very thorough consultant and when they were doing research, they looked at their maps and they said, "Okay, there is additional stormwater piping that comes down to us." Again, as Commissioner Larkin noted, we discharge to townships that are below us and that continues till you get to the river.
Well, thank you for that, Steve. What I take from that answer is that these pipes are, they're in place, they are always going to be and there's nothing that we can do about it, nothing we plan to do about it.
I can't speak for Tridifferent Township, Commissioner, I do know that-
I'm, what about us, though? What are we going to do, are we going to do? It's like, like anything, you know, we can, we can only control what we can, what we do, we can't control others. So I never, I never sweat about the others. But what are we going to do, if anything? That's my question. And if nothing, just say nothing.
So I, I can't tell you that right now because this is the first project, as Commissioner Larkin noted. The other projects that were noted, that were spoken of, may occur in the future, they don't go away. They still provide benefit, just not the benefit that's anticipated from the floodplain, floodplain project. So, yes, will, will we look at other properties, Church of the Savior, all these other properties that perhaps a project could be done? But as far as rerouting another township's pipes, no, sir, I don't think anything would occur there.
Again, I, I'm not saying we would reroute anybody else's pipes, but are, is there anything that we would do? And I, what I'm hearing is that, no, this is a condition that we now know exists, that we plan to live with. Is that accurate?
This exists in every municipality in the state?
Okay, all right, all right, that's fine, that's fine, I got, I understand, I understand. I got the answer. So, it's good that we know about that and for this floodplain restoration project, this is the first I'm hearing of it. Well, not exactly the first, somebody, some other people have told me about it, but nobody formally told me or invited me to that presentation. And it's a shame because people who have listened to me or watch my show, I have a show on Radnor Studio 21, Real News and Political Talk with Rich Booker on Radnor Studio 21. And on that show, I have very often talked about this very type of project and how I support expanding and reclaiming riparian buffers to accommodate stormwater. And the only way, again, that we are going to have a permanent solution to the stormwater issues in Radnor and the flooding, it's really not stormwater issues, it's flooding, is what the, what the concern is. The only way we're going to solve the flooding is to have less impervious surface, less development and less encroachment on the waterways and the, and the creek. So, this concept is one certainly that I agree with and support. And I know that might surprise some people, but of course, whatever we can do to reclaim riparian buffers and to allow water a natural place to rise and to fill when there is flooding, that is of course appropriate. And it means less development and means more preservation of those areas near the creeks. However, I personally have walked that North Wayne Creek all the way to TE and much of it is channelized and the properties go right up to the creek and it's concrete and walls in many places. So, it seems impractical to think that we can do this along the entire span of the Gulf Creek in North Wayne from the edge of the township down because there's so many properties and so many of the people have already developed their property up to the point where there's, you're gonna have to destroy part of the property to expand the riparian area and allow it to, to, to have an area for the water to go. So, what about the channelized areas that are existing?
So I can probably speak best to that. The, the plan is not to have just like a 30-foot riparian buffer or a restored floodplain that goes all the way down the creek. Because of exactly some of the issues that you're raising, because of the sighting of the structures on the property, because of existing channelizations, large, large heritage trees that we don't want to lose, things like that, there's going to have to be give and take with each individual property and that's exactly what the purpose of this survey is to determine. Now, there are sections of this that are channelized, that's absolutely the worst thing that you want. Because of course, every inch of rain goes up with the exact same amount as opposed to if you have that shallow V, each inch will spread out and goes up less and less and less. Depending on what the property owners are willing to do with us, some of what we would do would be to remove the channelization and install the riparian buffer. There are plenty of spaces where property owners are complaining to the township, "Hey, I've got this channel in my yard and it's falling apart, you've gotta come in and fix it for me." If we could take that out and replace it with a nice flood-resistant planting in a, in a riparian buffer that would make it much less likely that homeowners suffered property damage as a result of a flood, then I think that a lot of them are going to be excited about that. There are absolutely going to be people who are going to say, "Hey, I've got this quaint little walled-off section of my property and I don't want to get rid of that little sort of cobblestone, I don't know how to describe it. It's functionally a channelization of the stream and it looks nice and they want to keep it." What I'm told by Meliora is that you actually want areas that slow down the water. You get that from culverts, culverts should not be, you know, you don't want a completely straight run, then you're left with what they've got in LA and that creates problems of its own. So we may end up with a situation where everybody agrees, "Yeah, I'm happy to get rid of this channelization. No, I don't need my shed exactly where it is, I can pull it a little bit back." Or we may find out that we have, what I suspect will happen is, we're gonna have an area where some people are able to give us the easement, some people are gonna be excited about that, some people are not gonna be able to give us as much space and it'll ebb and flow.
There's hundreds of houses. It's hundreds of properties that are affected for that area.
I'm not sure what the number is, one of the reasons we're doing this survey is to find out exactly what the number is.
What is, so, this is highly unusual to come to the board for an $80,000 project like this without any kind of a prep, in my experience in five years at least. What is the total anticipated cost of doing this project?
We don't have a number yet. Until you figure out what the survey looks like and how much we're going to be able to move, we won't have a number because we obviously won't be able to put that out for bid. I can tell you that it is massively, massively cheaper to create a riparian buffer than it is to tear up McAdam, install a pipe, tear up a park, install a detention basin and then put everything back the way it was before.
Well, actually, you can't tell me that, though, John, because you don't know how much it's gonna cost, right? And I, I, being facetious, I understand what the issue here is. But there's 80, there's 80, 80,000 now for a project of unknown properties, of unknown duration and of unknown cost. I kinda think it's not ready for us, but, but I'm still not, I'm still not ready to say no, I guess-
This is a survey to answer those questions.
Right, I understand, but it seems as if even at that early stage that we don't have enough of a development. We don't even have a basic schematic that would show where the areas are we're talking about. We're just talking about what each of us knows from our, from our memory. So, you know, I think that if we're gonna talk about $80,000 to survey an area, at least let's have a drawing of what the area that we're talking about is, that we can show to the public. We, we have, we have 10 meetings coming up and we're gonna talk about $50 million or more of projects. Several projects of mine, one of, I made it in executive session, I talked about a project at a crossing walk at Glen Mary and King of Pressure Road for $118,000, which I can't get either a grant for or the people on this board to approve at this point. And it is for safety of moms and kids walking across to Radnor Elementary School, King of Pressure Road, which has 15,000, 17,000 cars a day. There's so many things that we need and so many projects. We have trees, we have sanitary sewer work, we have multitudes of projects which we approved and we didn't fund and Bob gave us a whole list of projects, as I say, 40 or 50 million dollars in projects that are important and necessary that we've already identified for this township. And to be coming to us right now saying, "Let's, let's spend 80,000 and have Meliora do yet another study, yet another study." Without, let me just, let me just finish. So, here's what I would say with this. Why don't we get at least a sense, it's if Meliora has done a presentation, it would have been good to have them here and to answer these, but I'd like to know exactly where, at least, at least have a drawing of the township and say, "We're gonna cover this area." I mean, at least have something, at least a map. And I, the other issue that I would have is, these are substantial improvements to some people's property, I guess, or substantial cost. I think you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna complain about coming in and tearing up their, their, their channelized area. But even if you don't, there's, this is a significant amount of work and the 80,000, like you say, is the beginning and it will, there's gonna be millions of dollars in this. My view would be, and I, I think I could get behind this, but I would suggest that we, we need to assess the properties that are improved with this because we have people all over the township, people without problems and people who are, who don't have the same property values or the same high-assess values that a lot of these properties you're referring to do. And it's really kind of unfair for us to ask them to pay for this, for these oftentimes very expensive homes. So I, I think that this is something that has merit in the project that, that, that could be worthy, but we should assess the properties when we do the work on those properties and let them pay it over 10 years. So I, I could, if we have that as a, as a condition, I think I could, I could get behind this.
Madam President? If I may. In your packet tonight of the proposed legislation- Okay, just wasn't sure. In part of the package this evening, it says in here that it's a mile and a quarter that this is going to be studied. So it's all clearly laid, laid out here of what this is gonna be. Now, six years ago, I think when this fee was implemented, we had talked about projects in this area, we have gone through this. So, also the board did approve a half million dollars in studies, so this is not a study. So, that's the difference, we are not studying anymore. Again, I think Steve did a nice job laying this out, it's approximately 120 homes that this is gonna impact. So to me, these are the type of projects we should be looking at. So, I know a lot of what I heard isn't accurate and that's unfortunate because when it goes out to the public, they hear these things and that's, that's not good to get, you want to get good information out on this project because it is significant. There is money spent in many of the wards, so it's not just, you know, that some people are paying in some areas and they shouldn't subsidize for other folks. That's not accurate either. So, I'd be more than happy to come on your show, Rich, so we could have fact and fiction, so that would be great.
You know, I, I'll consider that, I, I'm not sure of that, but that's a good idea, I'll have you on the show.
The issue is, is that we have, there's a lot here and like I said, the studies, the studies, I think we've studied, we've shown the stack of studies of how long, so now we're starting to move on. Now we're starting to get into this because areas, you talk about water coming into the township, like three outlets or that, these things have existed, but how can we manage that water as it comes in? That's what we have to get to. We already knew in the study for a half million dollars, we knew what the problems were. I'm not sure why we would do that, but now you're starting to get into the nuts and bolts of these things. So this is where we're, we're moving forward now to get answers. So we've got two projects that have been approved, last one, this one, this meeting, if this gets approved. Now you're starting to put things together that you're going to start making differences, starting to change things, starting to make a difference in investing the money in the appropriate way, so this is what we should be, have been doing.
But Bob, everything I said was 100% accurate.
It's not.
It's 100% accurate. It's 100% accurate, and it's nowhere inaccurate.
Gentlemen.
But what we don't have, we don't have a drawing of where, where you're talking about, the people, the people who watch this on television should see, not have a mile and a quarter.
And we've had a lot of those maps and drawings and all that that's out on the website.
We'll just put it out right now.
We can put that out there tomorrow, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
But the issue is...
So nothing I said was inaccurate, Bob.
Okay, gentlemen, gentlemen, please.
Can I ask a question?
I just had a quick point of clarification, so Bob, you mentioned this would impact 120 homes, you mean that's going to help 120 homes, right, that, not impacting as in, those are all the homes that are going to...
This is where the survey takes place, and that's how many homes, the volume of number of homes we're looking at, so, it's significant for where you look at the dollars being spent.
So it's 120 homes that could be helped by this project?
Absolutely.
Correct, that's what I was getting at, okay, thank you.
Well, actually, it'll, it'll impact an awful lot more.
Yeah, that's just the homes in the survey.
Right.
So for Commissioner Booker, this is basically Gulf Creek from, in the township, from Forest Road down to Radnor Street, it's a 50-foot wide swath, there's going to be cross-sections every 50 feet, 120 property lines that have to be deed researched, and it's, it is very detailed, it all takes place along the creek and township properties.
Mr. Farhi.
Just one, just one point of clarification or question to Mr. Booker, so, and I get you're for smaller government, but you want, you're against a stormwater management fee, yet you want to force the residents to have the government pretty much no-bid build on their property and then make them pay for the bill over 10 years, am I correct on that?
Well, I, I didn't propose it, Jack Larkin proposed that.
No, because you're the one that says that, that they should pay the bill, I don't know, because there sounds like there's too conflicting...
I don't think we need to argue over things that are not part of what we've got right in front of us.
But, so, let me, let me just respond to Commissioner Farhi, because he makes a reasonable point here, the, the proposal that Jack has put out is to take 120 homes and to bring heavy equipment and to regrade and expand the riparian buffer on those 120 homes, obtaining easements, doing deed research, and getting permission to do that on this number of homes.
That wasn't my question.
And so, that's the proposal before the board, I didn't make that proposal, my only suggestion would be, to the extent that taxpayers are directly improving a property, that the homeowners, and some of these are very expensive homes, that you would be doing this and expanding their, their area and regrading and doing this work, seems to me that that type of direct improvement on private property, this is not a stormwater pipe in public property or on the street, this is direct work on private property, that that is an appropriate item for the homeowner who receives that direct benefit to their property to pay for that, so that, it's different than than others.
It sounds like reverse eminent domain, in my opinion.
There, there, I think, I think there's a lot of problems with this, I think that there is an element of that, but what Jack said, as I understand it, is that he would get permission from everyone along the creek, and again, I think that there's going to be some, quite a bit of issue with a lot of these owners, 120, like, what are you doing, I don't, I don't know that it'll go as smoothly as, as what Jack thinks, I, what I've said is, I understand the concept, I can understand how the concept might be beneficial, but again, when you have the government doing specific work on private property for the benefit of that specific property owner, and again, many of these homes are very expensive and very highly assessed homes, that it'd be appropriate for that benefit that accrues to that property to be paid for by that property owner, over, like a sewer expansion or sidewalk.
Just knowing what I...
Madam President, if I may, the issue is, is, I know Commissioner Larkin's been out in the storms, Steve and I, most of these homeowners are looking for a resolution to an issue here, and I think there's one that's come up, so, if you're out in the storms, you see water flow, you spend time with folks, you're out there and see, you know that this is not a big issue. Now, I know in your ward we have Worcester, we're putting that in.
We do, that is, that is, that's a major, major project, and that's, that really is two properties.
Right, now, is that one that we should be looking at assessing those, those homeowners?
Well, I, you know, I, that's, that's kind of outside of this conversation.
Gentlemen, 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 I think we, that is not, that is not the issue in front of us, I think that some of those concerns may be answered by what this study will present to, or not study, but this survey, thank you, not a study survey, will present to us, you know, speaking in hypotheticals and who's going to be impacted is, you know, that's what this is designed to help us understand. Commissioner Nagel, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, two things, first of all, I wouldn't note that the meeting at which this was presented was noticed on the township website.
It was not given to the Board of Commissioners, though, and there was no...
Rich, I have the floor, if you don't mind.
Don't be rude.
I didn't interrupt you.
Commissioner Booker, please, it's Commissioner Nagel's turn.
Secondly, back in the 90s, I was on the EAC and was one of the authors of the riparian buffer ordinance, at that time, we did not have a riparian buffer requirement here in town, we proposed a significant riparian buffer, which unfortunately, the commissioners were unwilling to approve, and they downsized that buffer requirement to a level where it was almost meaningless, since that time, we have increased it incrementally, it'd be interesting to know, had that taken place, how much relief people would have because of that requirement, and I'm certainly going to support this project.
Okay, I think, Commissioner Larkin, do you have anything else that you'd like to say with regards to this?
Wait, all right, then let me, let me just chime in again, since we're asking...
No, I do not.
Cohen two and, two and three times, you just asked Commissioner Larkin, let me have a few more words.
Well, he had put his light on when Commissioner Nagel was speaking, which is why I asked, so I'm sorry.
All right, well, I put my light on too, then. In this case, I recognize the homeowners are looking for solutions, I understand that. I am for, for lower taxes, smaller government, greater individual liberty and personal responsibility, conservative values.
And reverse eminent domain.
But, but, it's not reverse eminent, I, and I, again, I have a lot of issues with this, because having the township go onto people's properties and approve it, I think you're going to have, it's going to be fraught with a lot of issues, but that's Jack who's proposed this, not me, all I'm asked to do is approve $80,000, and again, my view on this is that there is a direct benefit to these people, and I understand that they want to have, they, they want, they're looking for solutions, many people are looking for solutions, we as government have to do what government can do in, in the laws that we have and that we're bound by, and again, for 120 homes, $80,000 and an unknown budget in the future, this is something that the people directly benefiting really should have some payment for, and it's no different than when you run the sewer out to the, to the people's homes, and I've had to pay for that, everybody has had to pay for that, or sidewalks, it's a benefit that's being conferred, and there should be that element of it, it's, it's not a stormwater project in a public right-of-way or on public property.
Okay, any staff comment, any additional staff comment, is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2018-146 authorizing Meliora design to provide topographical survey of Gulf Creek and associated areas in conjunction with the North Wayne Flood Reduction Project in the amount of $80,000, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
We have the, we didn't accept my provision to have the people pay.
No, we voted exactly as what's here, thank you.
Nay, nay is the answer.
Okay, motion passes six to one. All right, is there anything for community development, finance, and audit, Parks and Rec?
At the last meeting of Parks and Rec, Tammy Cohen gave a very nice presentation to the Parks Board about the year-end review, I would like her to come present that meeting here, so the public can really see how much Parks and Rec does, and a special item I noted during the presentation was the incredible amount of cooperation and participation we get by other organizations within the township. So Bob, could we make, have Tammy come?
Sure, we'll definitely do that.
Bob, I also have one issue on, on Parks and Rec, it's been several months since we've heard from the Willows, they were supposed to be on a couple times and they've been pushed off, can we have them early in the new year to brief their updates on the project?
Sure, we can do that.
I think their plan is to come in January, at least, that's what I understood.
All right, well, I mean, they've been on a couple times and they've been pushed off, second issue on the Willows, did we address the safety of the roof?
Yes, we had a contractor go out there and make repairs to that.
Okay, and, and an issue I continue to hear from residents is, they don't, we've got the path up to the house blocked off, I mean, that house, once that project goes, is going to be under construction and residents are not going to be able to access it, in the meantime, can we remove the chain so residents know that they can still go up that way, because right now, there's some issues where they don't think they have access.
I'll reach out to the WPPNC, I know they were concerned with people driving back and forth there, the gate, the chain is across the road, but we did never put a lock on it, so anybody who wants to drive up there, all they have to do is remove the, remove the chain, place it down to the side, and go on up there.
Yeah, so if you can take it off and drive up anyway, I mean, until construction starts, can't we just remove it?
That, that would be something, if the board wants us to, we can do that.
I've heard that complaint, so I would join to say, let's just take it down, until there's an actual safety issue, I think we should let the people go up there, because people are, I've heard complaints, people garden, they want to get up there and they have to walk a long way, and it's, it's inconvenient, is what I've heard, not sure exactly what happens, I'm not there, but that's what I've heard.
I thought, I thought they already addressed that with the garden, that people were allowed to go up there, we addressed that months ago.
And they were allowed to go ahead, and that's why no lock was ever put on there, that they just had to just remove the chain, that's why there's no lock on there.
Well, I guess what Bob has said is, you know, it's the board's decision, do we want to keep the chain up or do we take the chain down until construction starts?
Let's, let's take the chain down until construction starts, so everyone can avail themselves of that.
Does anyone have any objection to the chain coming down?
Well, I have a question, though, we signed the lease with Willows Park Preserve that included that driveway, so wouldn't they be the ones that should control the chain?
I think that's, that would be a board decision, since we authorized that to go up, so, I know they expressed concerns to that.
Yeah.
Not, you know, they were good with not putting fencing up around the property, it's just with the chain on the driveway.
But we didn't, part of that lease, we didn't say we're going to block access to the driveway, Bob, Bob identified a safety issue, and he's said tonight that he's addressed the safety component, and I appreciate him doing that, but now that there's not a safety issue, residents should know that they have access and should be able to walk freely around the Willows. Again, it's the people's park, it's the people's house, and, you know, if they want to go up there, they should feel they have the right.
Are people feeling like the chain's preventing them from walking up there?
Uh, yeah, they don't, they don't know, they see a chain up there, and when you see a chain, usually you don't go, it's prohibiting you from accessing that area.
And people are not going to just take the chain down, they're going to respect the chain being up.
Is, isn't, to say, put a little sign up that says you can walk up there, I mean, I forget the reasons why we, they couldn't drive up there, I think, I thought it was a safety issue.
We put, yeah, we put the chain up there because there were shingles coming off the house, and we had somebody come out there, it was addressed, and until we have construction, we shouldn't have impediments to residents walking around the house.
Well, I don't think we need a vote, is there...
I don't think we can vote on it.
Is there consensus that we remove the chain? Does anyone...
I, I think that we should let the Willows Board weigh in on this, before we do anything, at least get a sense from them.
I think we heard Bob...
Is there, so, do I hear, is there consensus to remove the chain?
Yes.
I hear two, anyone else? Three? Anyone else? I mean, I think it's fine, move the chain, so we can leave the post there, and then when it comes time for them, I mean, we'll, we'll need to do that when there's construction, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll take it down tomorrow.
Okay, anything else for Parks and Rec? Personnel Administration, Public Safety, Library, did you have something? Oh, so Library, I just wanted to quickly report that I attended the Library Board meeting the other evening, last Thursday, I guess, I think it was, and the Library Board, the, thanks to the township, the elves for the shelves was a very successful endeavor for them, and just to reinforce, I believe what...
Where was everybody at for that?
What's that?
Where were you guys for the elves on the shelf? You left me out there to run on my own.
I didn't know you were running, I don't run, I'm sorry.
No, I don't run, it's, it's my legs.
Yeah, I'm too old to run, maybe next time, we'll start training now. So, just to reinforce what Annie, the librarian, had said to us, when they came, I think she was here last week when we were voting on the budget, they are making a transfer of $94,000 from their fund balance to the 2019 budget to go ahead and fund that, fund their budget for 2019. They're also currently engaged in strategic planning, I was able to hear their presentation, they're going to be doing a lot of work, and they may be looking for the commissioners to provide some input as part of the strategic planning process, so, board members, I'm not exactly sure where they landed on, who was going to do their, the planning process, the strategic planning, there were two different options, and one of those options involved a group, doing a lot of the focus group, as groups as part of the strategic planning, and the other involved Library Board members serving in that role, so, if anyone approaches you, they are going to be looking for the commissioner input when it comes to their strategic planning. All right, Public Health, I know we had our last Board of Health meeting.
Well, I was in the back room with the rest of you, so.
I do have one issue, I do have one issue on Public Health, for those who haven't seen, the CDC released a report at the end of November, which states life expectancy in the US will drop, which is concerning for a developed nation, the report cites increased deaths due to drug overdose and suicide as the reason, yeah, and I just wonder if there's things that we could be doing at, at the local community level to help counter these trends, and so, I would ask for a sense of the board that we ask the Board of Health to look at this issue, and if there's things we could be doing to move forward on it.
Sounds like a no-brainer.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
Well, actually, the Board of Health did look at the opioid epidemic earlier in the year, and this, they do a lot with this high school, and they've been doing stuff with suicide prevention, so I think they're already on board, but it wouldn't hurt to reaffirm that we're interested in them doing that.
Yeah, and I'd just like to see some recommendations, if they have any, and things we could be doing at, at a township level, either interactions with the school district, police department, school district, which I think is already underway and, and happens, but, but just, you know, just so the, the community understands what's going on.
By the way, another factor in the reduced life expectancy has to do with physical exercise, the use, too many people sit in front of their computers, for example, and that's one of the areas that our Parks and Rec Department has some wonderful programs for adults as well as children, so that's very helpful.
And I wonder if they're coordinating at all with the county, the county's got a big opioid in conjunction with the state, an opioid program, so, I wonder if there's, yeah, okay. All right, good suggestion, Commissioner Abel.
Well, as far, as far as the opioids, that's, we should enforce, opioid should be illegal, fentanyl should be illegal in coming into this country, should, it should be illegal, obviously, we can't prescribe it accurately, we over-prescribe it, and the drug manufacturers over, overproduce it because they make so much money, so, it's a, it's a national and a state, and it should all be illegal, that's the first thing, and then, we, we have a fighting chance of, of keeping the people, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, right, not to get into drug measurements, but, the way to stop the opioid crisis is to get people, so, to stop people from ever getting on them, because it's tremendously expensive and tremendously difficult, and the recidivism rate is tremendously high, so it's, it's something the government really doesn't have enough money in the, there's not enough money in the world to, to solve, unless we curtail people getting into it in the first place, so, I'm happy to support those efforts in whatever we can do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, new business. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the Board an issue that's happening over in Fourth Ward. Well, it's not actually happening in Fourth Ward, it's happening in Newtown Township at the Delaware County Christian School, which is located at kind of on the corner of Malin and Goshen Road. It's actually located in Newtown Township, but the property is directly across the street, the other side of Malin Road, which half is ours, half is Newtown. This is involving them installing a turf field with lights. I know it's one of our favorite things here. The lights, what's lights? Yeah. So I have residents who have been following this issue very closely. The school, several, about a month ago, month and a half ago, made notice to some of the residents, and some people got this, some people didn't, that they were going to be doing a presentation about their new plans for the field. I went down, some of the neighbors alerted me, I went down and heard the presentation. And they are going to be installing a turf field, they want... And they want to have lights. So the turf field's already been approved. No, Jamie? Well, there was part of it that was approved. So the turf field has been as part of a plan that was approved in 2016. Then they want to add lights, which they would need to have a variance for, and then they want to rent this field out for other groups to utilize. Commissioner Farhey, I know you love this. So I just wanted to make the Board aware that this is happening. We... Steve and Bob have been... Have made some calls to Newtown Township to try to get information. We're trying to gather information to see, you know, where this stands. We have residents that have been going to some of the zoning hearing board meetings. It hasn't come up yet, but I just wanted to alert the Board that this is happening, that this... You know, I'm not sure where this will go or how, you know, if the township will get involved. I don't even know if we can. But I just wanted to make you guys aware of this as I, you know, we may be bringing it back at some point.
Can I just make a follow-up to that?
Sure.
So I've actually spoken with Andy Gaverne, who is the Lower Marion Commissioner, who abuts the backside of Illinois on County Line Road. And I actually have received an email or two from Lower Marion residents regarding the lights. So I don't know if there's anything we can learn from that, but I think, obviously, John. John, do you have anything on what... I mean, our hands totally tied when it comes to dealing with...
Delaware County?
Well, not Delaware... Yeah, Delaware County, when it's just outside of the township.
Well, it's on the border. I'm sorry. If it's on the border, municipalities can take a position on zoning applications, land development applications that are on the border of your municipality. The appellate courts have said that you can do that. I'm not sure... Bob sent me some information on this. It sounds like they need a special exception to put the lights up under their zoning ordinance. So there's going to be an opportunity to... For the residents over there to get involved. I always think it's a good idea for the residents to hire their own legal counsel and get involved in a situation like that, even if the township would be involved. It's just a better scenario if you're serious about it. But that's... I mean, other than that, that's the info Bob had sent me. It looks like there's going to be an opportunity, though, in front of their zoning hearing board. I don't know what Newtown Township's position would be, whether they would support lights or not, but that would be the first question I'd ask. The residents should be asking. I assume there's some Newtown residents that are concerned about this, too.
Yeah, there are. There's a coalition.
Is that a no or a yes?
Yes.
But I think there's both, right? There's got to be Newtown residents that live in close proximity also, is what I'm guessing.
There'll be public comment at the end, so if you just want to hold for one second? Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, thank you for allowing me. I just wanted people to be alerted.
Well, the one question... Thank you for alerting the folks here, but you didn't alert with any type of a proposed course of action. Now, it was amazing to me that Sean had proposed a lighting ordinance, and then the very next night, Planning Commission jumped right on it and did review it. The Planning Commission, I mean, obviously, I had one, the meeting before, which was not apparently looked at, was one of my issues that, for some reason, was left off of the Planning Commission agenda in over five weeks, but that's neither here nor there. The lighting ordinance, maybe it's because he's Democrat and I'm Republican, I don't know. But in any event, the lighting ordinance that Sean proposed was basically just destroyed by the Planning Commission. So I think that... It seemed to me that what was proposed was an attempt to try to get in front of these lighting issues and have some say in how they're built, but the Planning Commission really set it back, and it seemed like it would be years before that would see the light of day to be anything that this Board would review. So what do you propose that we do with this, the news of this lighting that's coming up?
Can I respond to that real quick? Rich, then, if the Planning Committee doesn't want to deal with the lighting ordinance, then we can come up with something ourself. I mean, it was just for something for them to take a look at.
Well, I guess we'll have to come up with something.
Well, I think... I'm glad to.
Okay.
What you had in mind, Lisa?
I don't know what I have in mind, since it's happening in Newtown Township, you know. I don't know. I'm going to say that, at least, you know, for me, this is uncharted water. I have residents who are mobilizing and who are going and getting in front of Newtown. Unfortunately, when you go to another municipality, you don't have a voice. I really just wanted to bring this forward because, you know, I don't want anyone to say, "Well, this has been happening, why didn't you tell us?" If there does become something that we can do. And I don't know what that is going to be at this time, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. Just trying to be transparent, Rich. Okay. Any... We're going to have public comment in one second, unless there's any old business.
I have one piece of new business.
Okay.
So we... And I'm trying to understand all this, and Bob's helped me a lot the last couple of months. So we have a memorandum in the township where we provide services for certain private roads while we don't provide the same services for other private roads. Snow plowing, for example. I've had a couple of residents on different private streets in my ward question why they don't get the service, and I've had conversations with Bob, and it's to the point where I think that we need to decide as a Board whether we want to do this uniformly or how we want to address this because, you know, we...
Don't do this, Jim. Leave it alone. We got into this last year, it's not a good idea.
So how...
I would suggest leaving it alone. You're going to get pitchforks here if you start taking that away.
All right, Bob, I guess I'll send neighbors to the staff.
Okay. Okay. A resounding no. Any old business? All right, public participation. Now, would you like to please come speak? Yes, yes. Thank you for being patient, I appreciate it.
Thank you. My name is Jim Kristoff, and I live at the corner of Malin and Goshen on the Radner side. So I'm catty-corner from the school. And about 15 or 20 of the residents in our area, Radner Township residents, attended the superintendent's meeting at Newtown Township a couple of weeks ago, and we weren't allowed to speak because we didn't have standing. Now, as I understand it, Radner Township goes to the middle of Malin Road, is that correct? So we don't get notified, we don't get... The corner and the area of the school that we're talking about is adjacent to nothing but Radner Township. And what they're talking about is leveling the field so that the corner is at street level, putting lights on the parking lot and the athletic field that they want to put in, and moving the entrance to the parking area to about 40 feet from the intersection of Malin and Goshen. Now, as I understand it, the problem... One problem we have with traffic is when you have intersections and entrances to parking lots that are close to other intersections, and it's a fairly busy intersection, that it's going to create some problems. And there are... It's a fairly busy intersection, if you're familiar with it, but that could create problems. But it's not only the location of the field, the visibility that they'll have when they level it out, and the lights, they're talking about having the lights be on until 10 o'clock at night, and they're talking about renting out the field. So basically, turning this into a business. So it's not for their own personal use. You know, we... It's been there a long time. We've been there, I've lived in this house for nine years, and it's... They're good neighbors, the way it is. But if they want to use the field for their own purposes, that's one thing, but if they want to rent it out as a business, it seems like it's an inappropriate place to do that. And it's going to cause problems for the neighborhood, and there's only one or two houses in Newtown Township that are adjacent to this issue, and all of the rest of them are Radner Township. So I don't know what you can do legally, but hiring a lawyer doesn't seem like the only solution that we should have, where we can go to Newtown Township and beg for some standing, so to have our issues heard. So whatever the township can do to help us would be appreciated.
So I have a question on that, John, since you raised this. You suggested they hire a lawyer. If they hire a lawyer, will they say to their Radner residence lawyer in Newtown that, "Sorry, you don't have standing either"? Or will they listen to them?
Well, there's going to be an application to the Newtown Township zoning hearing board. So we're not talking about... The Sunshine Act basically says that you have to give public comment to residents or taxpayers. So that's... I'm assuming why Newtown Township has excluded the Radner residents from speaking. Some townships don't do that, some townships do. I'm guessing that's why they were excluded. But if you have an application going to the zoning hearing board, and I think they need a special exception to put the lights up, that's a quasi-judicial hearing. As long as you have standing, you live close enough, within close proximity to the proposed use, it's going to impact you, that's a different kind of standing. I mean, that's... The zoning hearing board will make that decision, but if you live next to the property, you have standing to take a position in front of the zoning hearing board. Different than standing in front of the elected body under the Sunshine Act. Different situation.
So on a similar vein, that's... The street is part Radner Township, so there's going to be some traffic impact as well. And as I understand it, they haven't done a traffic study, they're not planning on doing one, but could that be an issue that concerns Radner Township as well?
Definitely.
So anyway, I don't think it's just a local thing, I think it's something that we would appreciate the help from the township, to whatever extent you can help.
Is there... Can we maybe at the next meeting, could come up with some options that we could present to the Board that maybe, you know, is... Could we write a letter? Could we...
Sure.
Okay.
But again, if it's going to... I mean, there's a couple important facts that someone needs to ask Newtown Township. What is their position? Is that Board of, I think it's Supervisors, are they in favor of the lights going up? Or are they going to take a position?
Yeah, the map shows them zoned as R1 with some kind of variance, I assume, but...
John?
Yeah.
So after... Let's say their zoning board approves it, then can we appeal at the county level or no?
If the township wants to take a position in front of that zoning hearing board, you'd have to vote to authorize my office to get involved at the zoning hearing board level.
I mean, I'd be for that. If it comes down to it, I would be for that.
Thank you.
Let's... Maybe we can pull together some more substantial information, we can... And have it to share with the commissioners at the next meeting, our next meeting.
I mean, I would want to know from their manager, their solicitor, what's the township's position. I think you should know that before you take a position.
Can you reach out to the solicitor? Is that something the Board can authorize you to do?
Sure.
Does anyone object to John reaching out to Newtown Township Solicitor to see where they stand on the zoning with regards to the lights?
That's a good idea.
Does... I have consensus on that?
I would wait until we have the zoning hearing board and send them to that.
He may not have standing, and then it's already happened.
No, he'll have standing. He'll have standing at that point.
Not necessarily. They're not giving a resident who lives right across the street standing. I don't know why they necessarily would listen to John.
I'm just going to try to find out where Newtown is, whether they're taking a position. Has an application to the zoning hearing board been filed to put the lights up? There's an old zoning hearing board application and an order that was extended, I think, but it didn't have anything to do with the lights, from what I could tell. So I think you need to know all of that, plus where is Newtown on this, before you vote to get, you know, my office involved in this on behalf of the township. And even if Radner was involved in this, sir, you should still have your own counsel. The residents, if there's that many residents that are serious about it, because the townships may be... Township may be there to support you, but township and residents don't always have the same interests. You live next to it, township's looking at a bigger view. It just... It's better if you have your own counsel sitting there. Because I would not be your legal counsel, I would be the township's legal counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Jim. Thank you. Thank you all for allowing John to contact their solicitor. I appreciate that.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. Two things. One quick thing. Jake, climate change is really going to affect public health. But what I came before you is that you all live, except for Sean, live west. I really would like to ask the township, Bob, to call out with positive feedback to Radner House, who has repaired all the curbing and all the sidewalks that have been broken along Lancaster Avenue. Yes, it's on their property, but it's a big chunk of property. Created a way to move over to the right to get into Radner House's parking driveway more easily, curved it on the way out so they can get out more easily, and repaired all the steps on their property, and it's quite an upgrade. My experience of Radner House is not exactly cooperative, so I think it's called a few... You can... My old grandmother always said, "You can roam easier with honey than you can with vinegar." I think it'd be really nice if the township thanked them for all this work they're doing because it was a lot of broken curb. They were all broken down, and they've reset the squares of the sidewalks. They're really doing quite a job, and I would like to see them, Bob will agree to, and you will agree to it, to just thank them for what they're doing.
I don't have a problem with that.
I have no problem with a quick note to them saying thank you. Makes sense.
Okay. All right, any additional public comment?
More places should.
All right, so before I call...
Wait, I have one item of old business. I've asked for you and for Solicitor to provide an explanation as to why my November 12th item regarding amending the PLO did not get on the Planning Commission meeting and why it was not brought up for this meeting, even though I provided information that Planning Commission had addressed the issue.
Well, let me... Yeah, I mean, I'll address what I know.
You can... We can address it in writing at your leisure.
Well, let's... I'll address it so the whole Board can hear what the issue is. November 12th, I think, the Board authorized... Commissioner Booker's proposed amendment to the PLO, which was to eliminate the medical office uses, the dental office uses, and the sale office uses from the list of permitted uses in the PLO. That's all it did. It was just taking those uses, which had been approved in December of 2017 in the PLO ordinance. So he wanted that amendment. It never went to the Planning Commission. I don't know why it didn't go to...
Why didn't it go to Planning Commission?
Rich, I have no idea.
That's my question. So that's what I'd like you to find an answer to that.
All I can tell you is it didn't go to the Planning Commission, so...
All I'm asking is why didn't it?
Don't know. Don't know.
All right, but it's set to go in January, right?
It'll be... Steve?
That is correct.
That is correct, it's been directed to have it put on the January agenda.
And again, I just note that we had, at our last meeting, we had a lighting ordinance that was the next evening picked up by the Planning Commission, so it was, it was very unusual, with four weeks' advance notice, that it wasn't. Okay, that's my issue.
Okay, thank you. Before I call for motion to adjourn, I just would like to wish all of you very happy holidays and a Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, also, and-
Happy Hanukkah.
Okay, thank you.
Kwanzaa.
And Kwanzaa, everything. And to our staff as well, and thank them for a very good year, our staff, and our police department, and our fire, all those who support us, as well as our residents. So with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.